We're ready when you are.
Ready.
Six o'clock.
Very ready. All right, let's go ahead and call our regular meeting of the Wayne County Board of Education to order. It's six o'clock. And if you'll stand, we'll say the pledge. Mark, you care to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all board members are present in person this evening. And we can begin with the recognitions, if we have any.
No recognitions and no presentations.
Moving on to our good news.
So the best news, and I know you're already aware, but I just wanted to address it during the board meeting. Nicole Pratt, teacher from Eastland Elementary, has been named a finalist for West Virginia Teacher of the Year. That means there are five finalists out of the 55 districts. And so she is in the top five. We are very proud of her. And this is the fourth time in eight years that we've had a finalist for that final position. Of course, Sharon Cole was the state teacher of the year. So we.
Go Wayne County.
It just shows the quality of teachers that we have in the district that we're consistently seeing them recognized at the state level for their performance. So we're very happy for Nicole.
Kind of like punching above your weight.
Yeah.
Not bad at all. When will we know?
They do a, they do a ceremony in September.
September.
In early September. And as a matter of fact, it's scheduled the night of our first board meeting. And so at our next board meeting, we'll look at dates throughout the year that could be problematic, whether it's board meetings that fall on Christmas week or Thanksgiving week, or that'll be one of them where we might take a look at moving the date.
All right. Moving on to our informational items, our faculty and staff report tomorrow, August 13th. First day of school for our students is August the 19th.
That's a week from Tuesday, week from today.
Tuesday, yep. A regular board meeting on Tuesday, August 26th at 6:00 PM here in the conference room. And that is all we have. We can move on to our construction project updates.
Yeah, so the Wayne Middle School, I'm sorry, the Wayne Elementary School major improvement project, that's the addition of the pre-K rooms. We are starting to move in furniture on Monday. Now, those students, you remember the pre-Ks on a different calendar, so those students don't report until, I think it's the day after Labor Day. So we have some extra time there to prepare for them, but we're going to begin moving furniture in on Monday of next week. So everything is wrapping up down there. The Spring Valley High School soccer lot, we had installed the new drainage line. And of course, when we did that, we installed that line through the parking lot, so the parking lot had to be tore up. That has been repaved as you approved the contract to do that. That work is complete, and I'm working on getting a local company that does a striping work out there to stripe and seal the parking lot. So you'll likely be seeing something on that at your next board meeting. Our painting that you have approved at both Spring Valley High School and Wayne Middle School is ongoing. It's going to be, it's going to be a nice, nice upkeep for the buildings. Had a chance to visit both sites. I sent you some pictures and it, yeah. It definitely improves the looks brighter, brighter and cleaner, brighter and cleaner. Tulsa, we have put a new kitchen floor down there. And it's the epoxy floor that has been put in there, so I'm sure that they're going to be thrilled with that. That's been needed for several, several years, and that's been completed this summer. Sarita Canova Elementary School, that's the renovation of the basement there, so we can get those locker rooms usable and get some usable instructional space in the bottom of the CK Alumni Gym. We are scheduled, we'll be doing a pre-construction meeting, and I think that that meeting is likely going to take place at the end of this week. And then we'll move forward with it. Vincent Middle School, the major improvement project there is the safe school entry. The approval of the architect is on your agenda this evening. McKinley is the one that helped us submit the MIP, and I'm recommending them for approval on the contract. So you have that on your agenda as well. Wayne High School, the athletic roof. We bid that out. If you remember, we had originally priced it out and it came in well above price, so we changed some of the specifications. We rebid that out, and we've got a number that I think is a, is a good number for us to work on. So that is on your agenda for approval this evening as well. I can't remember if I mentioned this at the last meeting, but the level up roof work has been completed there, so that they're, they're finished. It's good to go. The Buffalo K through eight project, we've had design meetings over the previous two weeks. One with the architects and then an internal group had a design meeting as well, and we've provided feedback to McKinley. And McKinley is going to do an onsite visit to the middle school this Thursday, so that work will continue.
Any progress on the driveways, the two newer driveways?
No, we're, we're reaching out to property owners in the area to see what property might be available, so we can come up with the best design possible. Next up is Crum pre-K through eight. You remember when we were down there for their LSIC meeting at the end of the year? That they had security grant for a playground, and that playground is finished. And I think we sent some gravel and things down there that they needed for that. So anyway, that, that's all completed was the report that I received today. So that's a long list of things, but that's everything that we have going on right now.
If we have any, no delegations this evening, so back to our superintendent reports.
Okay, so as John Eada loves, I've got a long list of reports for you. And I'm going to, actually, I'm going to move the first item on there, the district and superintendent evaluation goals. I'm going to move it to the end, and the reason is, is we're going to discuss several things that will be included in the recommended goals for the year. And we're going to start with looking at the Hope Scholarship homebound enrollment data. So I had shared with you, and this is in your folder, so we'll go page by page here. So on the very top, you see an email. So on the very top, you see an email from me. We had received a FOIA request for numbers related to the HOPE Scholarship, and I had shared that FOIA request with you at a previous board meeting. And I just wanted to go over these numbers with you. The total HOPE recipients for this past academic year was 138. Okay, now, we're anticipating that there's another 151. So it's raised over 100% that have applied for the HOPE for 2025, 2026. So at the time that I responded to this, which was July 24th, our total active HOPE recipients in the portal system that we use was 289. That number currently sits at 306 HOPE scholarship students. And then there's a list of schools here in the response. There's a list of schools where these students are attending. There's 18 students that are part of individualized instructional programs, and then the large majority of those students are attending a number of private schools throughout the area, whether that's the Millard School in Kentucky, St. Joseph Catholic School, Grace Christian School, Expressions Academy Micro School, Covenant School or Rose Hill Christian School. Those are the schools on record that that for some of them, yeah. So our state aid, our state aid loss, we're projecting that that state aid number's around $6,792 per student. And so that, when I did this response, that that's about $1.9 million. That, that is an impact on the district now. So we have approximately 306 on the HOPE scholarship now. Homeschooling has also grown, and we've talked about this numerous times, but it had stabilized prior to the pandemic. And it had stabilized at about 350 students. And then it really spiked during the pandemic, and then after we came back to school five days a week, that number shrunk. But as we currently said, there are 516 students that are on homeschooling. So if you add those two up, you get a total of about 822. During the pandemic, those homeschooling numbers were around 750. But we have about 822 students that are utilizing other educational opportunities.
And that up in my head, that's about a loss of financial aid of what, about 5 million, something like that?
About, I've got 5,583,000 dollars in total. And just a little bit over 2 million of that is related to the HOPE Scholarship. So I had sent you all an article, I think it was the Purpyberg Sentinel had done an article about how West Virginia had lost the most student enrollment in the nation percentage-wise. And of course, you know, any time school choice is introduced into a state, you're going to see that effect. And so those are the numbers that we're seeing from across the state. So it's going to be a budget challenge for us as we move forward, so I wanted to share that with you. Next item on our list is intercom system upgrade, so I just wanted to make you aware. Sometimes we do upgrades and they kind of fly under the radar, so I was aware that we had completely replaced the intercom systems at Vincent Middle School in Eastland. Our technology department led the charge on it, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. Those two schools have new intercom systems. Also wanted to bring to your attention that the Marshall Advanced Manufacturing Center, we'd seen some posts last summer that they had conducted some STEM academies in other locations. And so we reached out to them about, we were interested in having one here. So they came to, they, we did, we hosted one here in Wayne County. And we sponsored it and pay, it's, the student enrollment for it is minimal, but we went ahead and sponsored that for the students, so all could participate. We had about 24 students that spent a week out at Spring Valley High School and participated in that STEM academy. They, it was set up to do the design thinking, and so they were presented with different problems, manufacturing problems that they had to solve. There was the utilization of drones and they went through a number of different scenarios over the course of the week. So I just wanted to bring to your attention that we hosted that this year. That was the last week of July.
Was that just for high school students, or was that for?
We, yeah, we originally advertised it for ninth through 12th graders, and then we had some seats available, so we opened it up, and we had quite a few middle schoolers that were also able to participate. Moving down to the next update, the Westmoreland property update, so back to your folder. The next page, you're going to, you're going to see a communication from Wednesday, August 6th. And as you're aware, we had a 60-day notice or a 60-day window in the agreement when we transferred the property to the Vincent Westmoreland Community Historical Society for the movement of the teen center to Vincent, and so I provided that notice in writing. That's what you have in front of you. And then I just wanted to bring to your attention that I also addressed the, our, the wish that the Playmates pre-K program that is operating on, in Westmoreland, that that moved to Kellogg Elementary School. And expressed that, you know, we would keep the current building open that they're operating out of for the year. If there's an agreement that that program would be moved to Kellogg, and I've asked for a written response to that. Okay, so we should hear more on that within the next 30 days. So I just wanted to share those communications with you, so you know exactly what was communicated. All right, our next item up is our financial analysis, always the fun part of the night. Jeb?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeb.
Okay, first up is the financial analysis that the state prepares for all of the, all of the county school systems. And you will see, and again, this lags a year behind because the books have to be audited and closed before they give the report. But you will see on the first page that our unrestricted fund balance at the close of the year was at $965,000. Now, you might ask, why is that number so low? When we looked at the closing audit numbers, we were at $2.7 million. Well, the answer to that is, is the state factors in any money that's encumbered, that's already obligated for projects, whatever it might be, they subtract that out. So our unencumbered balance was at that $965,000 mark. Our audited balance and what we actually had here was at the 2.7 million mark. But as you can see, we had the influx of federal dollars during the years '21 and '22, and that's where you see the real high carryover amounts. But with those funds gone and the loss of student enrollment, that creates financial difficulties, which is what you're seeing in the balances for '23 and '24. So let's look at some specifics related to these. If you'll look at the bottom of that first page, it gives you the revenue history. And you'll see in the year 2024 that the revenue had decreased by approximately $1.2 million from the previous year in '23. That's local source revenue. Now, remember, the way the school funding formula works is the more local source revenue that you have, the less money that you get from the state, the less local source you have, the more money you get from the state. So it's, it's an inverse relationship. So you're going to see that our state source revenue was up $6 million in 2024. And Jeb, that included the 5% pay raises, which was several million of that. So that was money that comes in and goes out in the form of salary, so that was part of that as well. And then you see the federal source revenue as well. And again, that's separate from the general fund, so that's separate from that balance on that bar graph. Jeb, was there anything else there that you wanted to point out?
Yeah, the most, most of the FY24, the federal source of that 25 million, that's, that's the COVID-related funds.
Yeah. Okay, if you go to the next page, and it's actually on the back of that, back of that first page. This is strictly personnel data. So the very first line that you see is the number of professional educators, and it says SSP, that's student support personnel, so counselors, nurses, that type of thing, so it's our professional positions. And it shows how many are allowed under state funding. And you see, and that's based upon enrollment. So what you see as we progress from 2021 to 2025, that number has consistently dropped. So in 2021, we were allowed 515 professional positions. That number has now dropped to 5, 4, I'm sorry, 469. So that's a loss of, what, about 45 positions there? Okay, now, the second line is the numbers that are actually employed. And that number was 527 in '21. So you can see, we were just about, you know, just 12 over top of the formula there. And then last year in 2025, and I said this data lags a year, they do have the updated personnel data, so that they have the 2025 column filled here, we were at 508. Okay, so that's a decrease of 19 positions. So we've lost funding for 45 positions. Our actual count, we've decreased about 19 positions. But if you'll see, a substantial amount of that decrease was from 24 to 25. Okay, and then the very last line for the professional personnel, it gives you the total number of professionals funded by the county board. And you can see that it had reached a high point in '24, it's at 74, and now that number is down to 60. And it will be even lower next year after the Griffin transfer season. All right, looking at service personnel, you see the same pattern there. Now, you're going to see, well, I shouldn't say that, you actually see a different pattern because you have 296 service personnel are allowed in 2021, and in 2025, that number was at 310. The reason for that is the ECATs. So we've added approximately 45 positions of either ECATs or interventionists were allowed in the district. They, they send that money to us as service personnel funding, so it's going to reflect in those numbers. So that's why you see an increase in the number of positions allowed. Okay, you see the number actually, actually employed, and that number's going to go up for the very same reason, because we had to employ those ECAT positions. And then you see the number in the third column down, you see the number in excess of the number funded. Okay, and then at the very bottom line, there's a total number for it all. And you'll see in '24, we were at 155 positions over formula, and that that number dropped to 141 positions in 2025. And when you get your next report on this, next June, that number will drop again. Okay, let's go to the next page, page three. All right, at the top of page three, you should be on the area that says estimated salary and employee cost, including PEI for locally funded employees. So these are the positions that are over formula. And you see the costs that are there for professional and service salaries for the positions that are outside of the formula. So the good news that you see on here is the amount that is listed for the fiscal year that just closed is the lowest amount in three years. That was at 4.6 million. Now, on the service side, that number was listed at 3.8 million. So what factors into this, and two big things that factored into this this year, was the 5% pay increase, which hit both of those line items, and then also the PEI increase as well. That was a significant chunk. So that drove off, drove up the cost of personnel, even though there were less personnel. And so you see the total estimated cost of personnel employed in excess of numbers funded, and that number is at 8.5 million annually. That's a drop from 9 million during the 2024 year. But again, you can see back in '21, when the enrollment was higher, that that number was only at 5 million. So then they have the bar graph that just represents those numbers. And we've talked about this in previous years when looking at this report. As we lose, as we lose numbers of students, the positions that we're responsible for fall to us, and so that's going to drive up that cost. And then you see in '25 that the number came back slightly, and again, in '26, when you get this next report, that will come back even farther after the Griffin transfer season this year. You see those enrollment numbers at the bottom? You see in 2021, we were at 6,400 students, and in 2025, we sat at 5,900. You see the losses, the second row gives you the losses year by year. Last year, there was a loss of 167 students.
And our average number of students per school is less than the state average?
Yes, yeah. So as Randy's pointing out, that at the very bottom of the last line there, the number of students, the number of students at a school above or below the state average, we are 46 below the state average, as far as enrollment numbers go, but the average campus size in the district. Okay, now, so we're talking about the effect on the county budget for these positions. So Jeb has some more data for us that we want to look at. And we're going to look at both revenues and expenditures. I do not. I can grab it if you need me to.
I just got five. I missed a new, or did I get you?
Everybody got one? All right, the first item up is the, this is a revenue comparison. And so what I asked Jeb to do is go back and pull numbers for us over like a five-year period. And you see the taxes that are collected from the regular levy. And that last column, the revenue actual year-to-date, that's 2025. So these are closing numbers for So these are closing numbers for the year. And the first thing that struck me was that there was a considerable loss in revenue from that top item. But the good news is, is if you drop on down, the state has changed the way that these numbers are coded. If you see that IRP fee, general regular. Jeb, remind me what that is.
I want to say it's related to a utility fee, the tax on utilities.
Okay, so you see that 1.5 million was recorded in that line item for the year, which is significantly higher than the previous year. So part of those taxes that were previously recorded in that first line were recorded there. And then the very last line of that block of information, the interest from the sheriff, you see a massive increase there. So the total local share of monies that we collected is found there at the bottom of that block of information under the total line. And you can see that from 22 to 23, the revenue remained remarkably the same. There was a jump in 24, and then there was also a jump in 25. So we brought in about $22.3 million from local funds. And again, the way the state funding formula works is once they figure out how much we need to operate, they subtract those local funds from that total amount that we need to operate, and then the state applies the rest. But again, the rub is, is that whole formula is based upon enrollment. So if your enrollment's shrinking, your budget's shrinking. So if you go to page two, these are other revenues that were collected through, through the year. So the report total, the total of both pages, one and two, for 2025 was the 80.5 million. So you'll see that there was actually a decline in revenue from 21 to 22. Remarkably stable in 23. A jump in 24, and then a jump in 25 as well. So about 80.5 million is what we're bringing into the general fund. Jeb, anything else you want to point out on that document?
Yeah, I think Mr. Alexander said those, those two numbers were overplayed at that bottom. And I'm sorry, I don't have my sheet in front of me.
He's looking.
That, on the, on the revenue side, that from the local share. I think it's more of a miscoding from the IRP regular fee and the entry from the sheriff. That's probably just a miscoding. The tax of regular living and taxes exit flow are basically understated. But as he said, if you add it all together.
It's there.
It's there.
Okay, we want to look at expenditures? You want me to grab my sec? Now going back to that financial analysis from the State Department, if you look at a comparison from 24 to 25, we reduced 28 positions in the district. But if you look at our expenses, and you look at that top line item, we're still paying more for personnel cost after reducing 28 positions. And the reason for that is the increase in PEIA and the 5% raise. So it was important that those reductions occurred, or that number would have been significantly higher. But you know, we did see expenses in the professional salary go up. And you, you see that in the service salary there on the first page as well. Just looking at the page here, if you see anything that, and again, you're going to see this five-year comparison. I'm going to drop to the bottom and look at our total salaries and benefits. And again, you're looking at expenses. So we've had three 5% pay raises during that time. We've had the PEI increase. We've had the insurance increases. Liability insurance increases. So we basically went from about $57,000 of expenses in 2021 to $66,000 of expenses on page one, and then we'll move on to page two.
Two, we spend a lot of money on substitutes.
Yeah.
Professional and servants.
Yes. And we get an allotment for that from the state. Jeb, I'm trying to remember in my head, I'm thinking it's like $600,000 or. But.
Doesn't cover.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't cover that expense. Okay, on page two, our continued items in the in the general fund, that professional educator services, those are our pre-K contracts. Other professional services are architects, and the work that we're doing on projects can be contractors.
When you make your improvements, it runs it out, don't it?
Yes. So you see different amounts there. If you go on page three, you're going to see how the electricity prices have increased. It's about halfway down on page three. And I was, I was actually impressed on here about the diesel cost. It dropped over $100,000.
Wow.
Which surprised me.
Maybe because of the gasoline buses? How many gas buses do we have now?
I think around four.
The gasoline was.
But the gasoline, the gasoline dropped as well.
How in the world the gasoline?
Shorter routes or something?
In 2023, you were showing fuel gasoline 209,000, and now it's 78,000? How did we do that?
The, in 22, the number was at 92,000. That's when buses weren't running full-time. So with the 78,000.
Don't we have that?
Jeb, Jeb, what do you, what do you see there?
I'm just curious, that two lines there seem so outwack with yours each one, on each side of it. Yeah, I'm not sure what's going on with that.
Whatever we did in 2023, let's not do it again.
I can't wrap my head around that. Can you?
No.
Well, that's why we like to do these five-year comparisons to see if there's any anomalies out there. And sometimes they're easily explained, and sometimes they're not. Okay, so for example, on the last page, and we're going to look at another report on expenses next. But on this last page, you see the bus replacement. You remember how we had a hard time getting buses in?
Sure.
So our orders all came in at one, once. Now, we had received the money for it, but the expense all hit at one time. So you'll see that the expense for bus replacement was double what it is in a, in a normal year. And Randy, to your point, going back to 2022, you see it was only $7,000, and we couldn't get any, we couldn't get any buses that year.
We tried. We did try.
So again, you have a report total. And you see the expenses year after year with the total expenditures at 81.5. So let's look at one more. We've got it.
Ask you, just going back to page one on the workers' compensation, is that our premium, or is that what we've paid out for workers' comp claims? Do you know? So this is a 327,000 in claims, which is higher than we've paid in the past.
What we paid out and premium, so it's.
It's both then, okay.
So it, if the coding changes over the years, it can.
It can skew that.
Yeah, it can, it's can skew the numbers, and you got to look for it elsewhere. That's why, Randy, I think that that gas expense, or I'm sorry, that, the, the fuel expense is, is likely in another category, but we'll, we'll pull the information and locate it. Okay, so the next, next document that he gave you is just a straight comparison between 24 and 25. So the first column of information is 2024 expenses. The next column over doesn't have a year in it, but that's 2025 year-to-date expenses. So it just shrinks the previous report down to the last two years, and it gives you a difference. So we've been going through this trying to identify any problem spots. So you'll see that salaries overall went up about 1.2 million. And again, in 25, there was the additional 5% pay raise, so that contributed to it. You'll see that the service overtime was down $52,000. You see some other numbers down there. There was actually some savings on unfunded liabilities, retirement benefits. But overall, expenses were up 2.6 million on page one.
One thing on that page, and I'm sure some just happenstance, 2024 expenses, professional subs, regular, we had a dash, nothing.
24, we, we expensed all the professional sub costs.
Okay.
So we used those COVID, left, leftover COVID funds for sub costs.
We wanted to make sure we.
Used it all.
So you remember, we had to close everything out September 30th, and construction projects were still ongoing. So there was allowable costs that are in our typical budget. So they, what we did was we front-loaded those expenses, paid for those out of COVID funds. And what that did was it reserved an additional 2.5 million for us this year.
So it was a use it or, or lose it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, they had a hard deadline of September 30th. Going to page two. So like you see the item down there, the vehicle insurance. That's been coded differently in 25.
Basically reallocation. It's just split amongst more counties.
Flood insurance. How many buildings do we have to have flood insurance on?
Dunlow? Kellogg.
I would have thought Kellogg.
You, you explain that one to me. We have appealed, and appealed, and appealed.
Because of that spring valley, but that doesn't, it doesn't ever make it to Kellogg Elementary.
No. It was some, it was identified in the 100-year.
Eastland. Tim mentioned Eastland.
Eastland. You know, we had to put the flood wall around the sewage treatment plant, even though there's a dam a mile away.
Yes, things always driven me crazy. Place we used to live before, I had to pay flood insurance every year. It's like, well, they built the Beach Fork Dam. Unless it collapses, I'm not going to get flooded.
I do remember when the water was over there at the bridge by the little jet water.
Yeah, but even the flood was around as long as the dam was there.
About 62 when that happened, wasn't it?
About the big flood? Yeah, I think it was, at least.
It got up in where the new high school was.
Y'all are older than me. I don't remember that much from 62.
I'd be older to remember that.
And again, this, this is just a zoomed-in look at the last two years. So you see page three. And then you go to the last page, and you get your totals. So 2024 expenses were at 79.5 million. 2025 expenses were at 81.5 million. So the difference was approximately 2 million. When all was said and done. Now, there's still a few items that have to be adjusted. You'll see the very last item on the list is the fund transfers out. This is money that we move from the general fund to cover any of the other funds, food service, for example. And so in 2024, that number was 4.1 million. You're seeing right now, it's listed at 1.1, but Jeb has to make an additional transfer, so that expense will go up. Jeb, what was you projecting there? To have to transfer out for federal funds?
I'm estimating about that, maybe not, maybe. We need to, first of all, we need to transfer, we need to cover the PEI fund, roughly $250,000. PEI, health insurance still needs to be finalized. I'm estimating another $500,000 to cover that. We have to cover the capital project fund, basically it's a timing difference. Everything that we spend on the capital project, we get reimbursed for.
Cover it until we do get reimbursed, yeah.
Approximately 50,000. On the capital, or on the Fund 61 Special Project Fund, I'm estimating about a million, about a billion to cover that. But on the flip side, we're going to turn around and close out the special project fund at about 2.5 million.
And that'll be transferred to revenue.
So basically, we were hoping it would be a wash.
Close.
So again, that's. Again, that's, this, this is all. Until we finalize P E I. Get our P E I bill and all this, all this speculation. We had a 2.7 million dollar fund balance last year. Told Mr. Alexander, I'm thinking they'll get, take the, maybe $200,000. I think we'll be somewhere between 2 million and 2.5 at the end of this year. It's a pretty conservative estimate, so.
And then when they, when the state issues their report, if any of those funds are encumbered, you know, going back to that first page that we were looking at. If any of those funds are encumbered, you know, it comes off the total amount, so. Jeb, what were you thinking we were going to have encumbered here at the end of the year? I know it's a smaller number than last year.
We looked at it today and I think, what was it, 170,000 or something like that?
Yeah, so we're, we're expecting your, your number that currently sits at $965,000 to go back up. To 2 million or between two and 2.5, some, somewhere in that range. Which is good news.
Better news.
Now, the other thing, Jeb, correct me if I'm wrong, going back to the expenses. When you look at the 81.5 in expenses. Those include. That. 2.5. In COVID funds. That we accelerated the, the expenses on, correct? Okay.
So that one's going to happen next year.
Yeah, so I think, I think. Overall, we decreased expenditures slightly this year, if you factor that in. Because there was 2.5 million dollars worth of expenses that we took on. Yeah, well, that, that 2.5 million in COVID monies, basically, we, we use district monies upfront. So we have the 2.5 million, which will, which is what he's talking, will cover these other expenses. That we're anticipating and, and help balance everything.
It's not terrible.
It is what it is.
And unlike some counties, we used it the way it was supposed to be used.
We did use the COVID funds, well.
Some of them got in trouble.
Okay, let's keep moving. I don't want to aggravate John either.
No, 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 I'm fine. I've got all night, Todd.
I just, I wanted to mention to you, I heard from the high schools about athletic ticketing pricing. Our high schools have charged $6 a ticket for some time now. And the large majority of the state is higher than that. So our three high schools are going to be switching to $8 a ticket for adults for the coming year for events. Our middle schools are at $5 a ticket. Okay, and just as our expenses have increased, their expenses have increased as well. So in order for them to support those extracurricular programs, they need to raise that revenue generation. Next in your packet, going back to the Manila folder. We, I received another Freedom of Information Act request, and again, from an, this is from an outside group. This Freedom of Facts Information Act request centers around vaccinations and. How many students have requested exemptions and things like that? And you'll see that this is from a law firm out, out of state. I know that, I can't say that every county received this, a large number of counties did. And so I just wanted to make you aware that. We had received this information and as always, when I finalize the numbers and send them out, we'll, we'll bring the numbers back to you.
Now, once we deal on that, because. The governor was trying to say one thing and the.
The.
On how we did the vaccination.
Yeah, where we stand right now, the state board directed the state superintendent to notify all the counties that they are to follow the code on vaccinations. So where we stand right now is, as we've always stood, vaccinations are required to attend school. And there's lawsuits that are going on right now. I think I saw that there was maybe an injunction or an order from a court in Raleigh that. Some students were allowed to attend while the matter plays out in court, but. There's some kind of legal action that's occurring between the state board and the governor regarding that executive action. But the bottom line for us, and again, this could change tomorrow morning. But the bottom line for us is that as we stand now, the vaccination requirements that are written in code is, is what we've been directed to follow.
I'm afraid we'll have more than just a hoopy coffee outbreak.
We did not, we did not have many exemption requests. We did not have many at all, and when I do the FOIA response, I'll share those numbers with you, I don't want to say them out loud because I, I don't know for certain. But I can tell you, it's very, very small number, very small. Okay, moving on, we're going to get to personnel matters here in a little bit, I just wanted to give you a staffing update. So. Right now, we have four vacancies in the district, that's it. I think that that's the lowest number I've ever seen. Professional, and it's, we have three sped vacancy, three special education vacancies and one math vacancy. And. That's after tonight's agenda, after you do your hirings and everything, and then. We, we've got somebody that's eligible for that math position. And so we know that that'll be taken care of. Filling the special ed positions is always difficult, so the second number I was going to share with you is we have 11 teachers on permits. Out of field authorizations, everybody else is fully certified. Those 11 positions, I think one was a foreign language and the other 10 were special education positions. And again, we consistently see those out of field permits there year after year. As far as the RIF list go, there are zero left on the professional RIF list, everybody's back. And I gotta put a little asterisk with that because we did have a couple employees that did leave the district, either for other employment or. Pursuing a different avenue, so there were, there were two that dropped off the list and that don't have jobs back with us, but they left for other reasons. But the remainder are back with us. And then on the service side, there are two that remain on the preferred recall list on the service side. And again, that was caused because we had reduced some secretary positions and then we also have an aid position. And with the aid position, the person wants to be in a certain area and isn't bidding on all that's available. But there's, there's two, two left on the list there. So we are in good shape as we are ready for faculty and staff to report back tomorrow. The final item I'm going to share under the superintendent's and director's reports is a communication that I had sent, you, you received an email. Regarding a complaint. That a parent had filed with the Department of Education and. I had sent a response to that complaint back in early June. And I know there are some additional emails going around this week, so I just wanted to share the information regarding my response, so you were aware of the situation. And then I said that was final item, Johnny, I lied, and I got one more. In your packet after that email is a, is a draft.
Oh, yes, our goals.
For the goals, so again, these will be district goals for the year and it will be the. My evaluation goals, the superintendent evaluation goals. Again, this is a draft, we're not going to finalize these tonight, we'll finalize these at the next meeting in August. So these are the items that. I thought. We needed to focus on, and again, are consistent with what we were looking at last year. So academic achievement and growth. We are looking for a 3% increase in proficiency in all tested grade levels in both ELA and mathematics. Chronic absenteeism, a decrease by 5%. These are not easy goals.
5%?
Yeah. Special education. We're talking about establishing a stakeholder focus groups to develop actionable recommendations for improving priority service areas, and by that I mean like. Co-teaching, 1% education. Those, those focus areas that we need to look at and identify best practice. And just have discussions about what we're currently doing as our special needs population continues to grow, as our overall enrollment shrinks. We need to. Take a step back and from the thousand yards view of what we're doing and make sure that we're doing the, the best things that we can, and I, I think that. We're doing a lot of good things, but I'm, I'm, I would like to look at that this year to see if there's anything that we can do to improve services there. And then number four. Enrollment stabilization in the school choice era. So it's a real challenge for us. So I think as a district, we need to take a look at strategies to help stabilize the enrollment. And to engage with our families more. So that we are seen as the best option. And so there's a number of things that I kind of have on, that I've been working on and looking at across the nation, that's some things that districts do and. We can talk about those things at future meetings, but just to try to stabilize that enrollment and put our best foot forward. And then finally, the fiscal stewardship and operations. So. I think that, you know, we're close to what looks like a, a break even year. Since we've been dealing with the significant increase in expenses over the last few years, and so. Now it's time to turn the ship the other way and try to, try to land it in the black. So to me, these were the key issues that we're facing, and after going through all those reports. You see why I saved the district goals to last, because I think it addresses some of the problems that we've seen during our discussions about those other items. And then at the bottom, there's, you know, our measuring success document, we will, these items are already incorporated into that document, or we will incorporate these items into that document or into our financial reports. Each month. And then we'll have a mid-year review and then an end of year review where we specifically look at these items and have discussion about where we are. And again, this is a draft, so if you have any ideas, anything that you would like to see included, feel free to speak now or. You can speak up at the next meeting if you want, if you want time to think about it, any thoughts?
We decrease our chronic absenteeism by 5%, where does that put us, 20, low 20s?
I'm, I'm hoping by the next meeting to have baseline data for you in those first two categories. And that's the academic achievement and the chronic absenteeism, so I'll see if I can get you a baseline number.
Since we're using taxpayers' money and we're all about educating the kids, these look like really. Good goal.
With the special education stakeholders, are we, does that include the cadre that we created last year?
I think that's, yeah, it'll include the same people, but I think. What we're doing is looking at grouping them according to their role in the district.
Okay, so it's more specific.
Yeah, more specific.
In a larger group?
Yes. Let me point out one more thing on this document, so. Mark was joking with me about a motto earlier on, and when he said, I heard about a new motto. In our opening meetings for the year, we've been talking with the administrators about. And we're using the tagline, quality instruction every classroom, every day. And. As a way to, to bring some focus to what we're doing, the district's motto for a number of years has been, learning today, leading tomorrow. And so I think we ought to consider maybe doing a shift to help us refocus and, and kind of speak a little bit more directly to what our priorities are. And so we've been looking at suggestions and at the top of the page, you see. A motto on there, high expectations, strong instruction every day. And the thought was, is that this speaks to that quality instruction, but it also. Speaks to other things such as attendance, chronic absenteeism. It speaks to all of our employees, service employees as, as well as classroom instructional personnel. And so, high expectations, strong instruction every day. We want our motto to really communicate what we're focused on and what we're about. Especially when we're dealing with so much competition. So I'll leave that for you to think about as well and. Okay, I'm going to get some more feedback from staff as well, and then we'll talk at the next meeting.
Wonder if it'd be better to say strong instruction, high expectations every day.
That's a good idea.
To lead in with the instruction first.
Any other questions, comments regarding the goals or anything else from the list?
No. I could start.
Okay.
I like yourself.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
All the superintendent reports.
He never even mentioned the football schedule.
Oh, yeah, I stuck it, yeah, well, and we, I found, Tanya Bowman found a typo on it. And so we're getting it corrected, but that's what, that's what's going to appear in the. That's what's going to appear in the football edition as our ad. And so we, we've done this for the last several years and we've tried to hi- highlight a. A scholar athlete. And I thought, we got a nice group, we rotated each year between a cheerleader or football player and a band member, and we rotate the schools every year, so they provide us a different one every year. But I, I thought it was neat that you have the student from Wayne High that's in the medical explorers program. With Marshall Health, you have a student from Spring Valley that's in the jump start program with Mount West, and then a student from Spring Valley that's in the Hurt Academy with Marshall University. So that, that was nice to see.
Board directives, board reports. I, I just want to mention real quick, I did get to be part of the new teacher orientation. This past week, and it was so nice to see so many familiar faces in that group of students that came from our schools. Gone to college and now they've come back to be part of our educational team here, so it was really impressive to see the number of kids that.
It's hard for me.
Graduated from here and wanted to come back here and be part of us, so it's, it was pretty cool.
I think we had around 22. I think it was around 22 teachers that.
Wednesday?
Friday.
No, Friday, it's Friday.
Friday, we had a two day orientation, orientation, so the first day was all instructional and academic professional development, and then the second day was policy. So. We came out and gave them a brief greeting on Friday morning. But the, and you reminded me of something I was going to mention, assessment results are going to be released tomorrow by the state. So those, that, that has been embargoed, they're going to lift that embargo tomorrow. So those, that, that has been embargoed. They're going to lift that embargo tomorrow after the state board meeting. So they said it'd be around 10:00 AM or so. We'll, we'll see some assessment results. So at our next meeting, we'll, we'll focus on it and really dive into that data.
All right, moving on. No unfinished business, so we can move on to our new business consent action items. Superintendent recommends approval of the following action items. Additional items received prior to the time of the meeting may be added. Discussion and or separate action of items may be requested by members of the board and or superintendent. Number one is considered for approval. The recommended personnel matters on pages one through six.
And there is a, there is a revised version.
And we need to pull one.
Pull one?
Yeah.
The transfer.
For the transfer.
Okay.
We'll do it for separate consideration.
We'll pull the transfers Shannon Ross for separate consideration. I need a motion to pull that.
Motion.
Motion, I need a.
Second.
Okay. And we'll go ahead and Mark has gone, recused himself from this vote and has left the room. So we can consider the personnel matter for Shannon Ross, transfer at Dunlow to the school based in Intervent.
We first did the thing to pull it. Right?
Yeah, but you didn't, you didn't vote, and I don't, I don't think you need to vote.
I don't think we have to. I didn't think we ever had to do.
We, we can just pull it for separate consideration.
Just for separate consideration. So we don't need that.
Right. So Johnita made the motion, Randy made the second.
To hire Shannon Ross.
For the transfer.
Transfer, yes.
Any questions or concerns on that transfer? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Bring back little Mark.
Now for the remainder of the personnel matters.
And there was a couple spelling corrections in here. Page two. Actually, it was a name correction from Kathy Floody to Mary Floody on page two. And then I think the other one's on the very last page or next to last page. Yeah, next to last page, Stewart.
Make a motion to approve as revised.
Motion by Randy, second by Mark, to approve as revised. Any other questions, concerns on those personnel matters? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Number two, consider for approval, the purchase requisition order in quotes in excess of $5,000, pages seven through 17. Motion?
I'll make it.
Dennis, second?
Second.
Randy. Questions or concerns on any of those purchase requisitions? The tree removal at Eastland, that was the trees that fell on the building and.
Yeah, and we had to, we had to react immediately because the tree fell on the building and knocked the power out to the building. I shouldn't say it fell on the building. It fell next to the building. We kind of got lucky. Now, while, while he was there, we had about 13 trees removed.
Right.
You, you guys know how those sycamores hang over that back section. And we had cleared a lot of that out a few years ago, but there was more that needed it, and he took care of that while he was there.
I'll say while he's there, get it done.
That's a problem this year. All right. Any other questions or concerns on those? All right, none heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. New business, separate action items, consider for approval, the bid contracted services for Wayne High School athletic facility roof replacement in the amount of $91,188. Second motion by Mark, second by Johnita. And that was with.
And that's a basic garage.
I was gonna say it's local too. I like that.
That's local too, but I'd never heard of it.
Brandon Michaels, general contracting.
Yeah.
And that's pretty mu- that's pretty much going to replace the roof on every building down there. We did pick up the alternate. The alternate was the concession stand on the home side of the field. And Tom Harmon told me that it was
Pretty bad.
It, it was in, yeah, that it was actually worse than some that were on the original list for replacement. So we went ahead and added the alternate as well and go ahead and get it taken care of while they're there.
What materials are we using? Is it like a rubber roof or is it metal?
We switched the specs. I'm, I'm pretty sure it's metal.
Okay. That'll last.
A black panel, a white panel.
Yeah, that's right. I'm sure they wouldn't mind.
I suggest that.
I wouldn't care, would I?
I wouldn't.
I'm with you. All right. So that is for the athletic facility at Wayne. Motion by Mark, second by Johnita. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Two, consider for approval, the contract for architectural services for the Minton Middle School major improvement project, and that's the safe school entrance.
Yeah, it's a safe school entrance.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Dennis, second, Johnita.
This is a flat fee project, so we negotiated a flat fee. The architect agreed to a, to a flat fee for this project. It's a small project. So it's $13,500 for a $150,000 project.
All right. Any other questions or concerns on that contract? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Three is consider for approval, out of state travel, employee to travel to Phoenix, Arizona to attend the Jim Knight Teaching Coaching Leading Conference, October 6th through the 8th. And that's funded by the Educator Support Pilot Grant. We also have an employee traveling to Atlanta, Georgia to attend an NCTM math conference, October 15th through the 18th, and also funded by the Instructional Leadership Grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Johnita and second by Randy. Any questions or concerns on this employee travel? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. The four is consider for approval, the lease agreement between Judy James or Doug James and the Wayne County Board of Ed for the rental of the space for the radio tower located on Cotton Hill Road, Moses Fork Mountain in Crum, West Virginia, at a cost of $260 per month, beginning July 1st through January 31st, 2026.
Yeah, we usually do this for the whole year, but this is when we do the digital radio conversion, we'll no longer need that tower. But we'll, you know, I don't know what all that's until, it's going to until we'll probably have to tear it down, get it off their property.
We discussed this last year.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm hoping that there, there's possibility that we'll be ready to move forward by January. And so I just wanted to do half a year to be honest.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Dennis, second?
Second.
Any other questions or concerns?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
A whole bunch. First, have we had the, have we had a previous agreement with them in prior years? I don't recall.
Yeah.
And, and who drafted it?
Gosh, I don't know. It's been in.
I don't either. It's been
Predated me.
Tried or quit work.
I guess I overlooked it the years I've been here. There's a lot of things I don't like in it.
Is there anything that can keep us from terminating it in January?
No, but I'm still going to cover a few things here. It just bothered me. One, I think actually it probably should be between Judy James and Doug James. I mean, I didn't do a title check, but everything I saw online, they're co-owners of it. I don't know why there's an or in the initial paragraph rather than an and.
I don't know why that is either.
I, I have no idea.
Their husband and wife.
Yeah. And I guess that, I mean, I look, I could look online and see plenty of agreements they had that way. Another thing, now it's only going to be a few months, it's not a big deal. I'm kind of a model unknown at this time. We don't even know the model. That's in paragraph one. And again, if it's six months, it may not matter. Otherwise, I don't know why there's a consumer price index provision in paragraph number three. In paragraph seven, it's got a thing, maintenance shall be charged at the prevailing rate. Well, that's about as vague as it gets. That's in my view, probably worthless from a legal standpoint.
Which one do you want?
Paragraph seven. I mean, what prevailing rate determines what the prevailing rate is?
Who regulates that?
Well, there isn't. It's just, it's kind of a word salad. I absolutely do not understand paragraph number 13.
And actually, I think we're responsible for any maintenance on it outright.
I would think we are. It just didn't make sense to me. Paragraph number 13 makes, I don't understand what it's saying either. It says tenant covenants that lessor is Caesar of good and sufficient title and interest to the tower and has full authority to enter and execute this agreement. I don't know why the tenant would make a covenant to the lessor regarding. And the next paragraph, paragraph 14 was just a typo. It's, it should be ITS without an apostrophe. And I don't understand the final sentence of paragraph 14. I think they meant to use a different word. Should a default in payment occur under this agreement, lessor shall have the option to assume the tenant's equipment as collateral for I guess it doesn't hurt, but I don't assume it. I think to seize it, to take it, to put a lien on it. I don't understand why the word assume is there. I don't know. I just looked at this thing, the lawyer in me, I just like, geez, I didn't like this. And I'm not a lawyer representing the board, as I've saying that for the 500th time.
Any, anything else, Randy?
No, that's it on that one.
Okay. Let's, yeah, I'll pull it and I'll send it to our attorney
Okay.
with Randy's comments and.
You say, we discussed this last year at length. I remember most of it.
Yeah.
Part of it.
Well, it's, it's been in place for.
Oh, Lord.
We've just repeated the agreement, but.
It, it's an indictment of me. I've been on the board since 2018, so I've obviously not noticed this before. And that's going out on the public.
On what purposes is it? Is it for the radio station?
Oh, bus radios.
Bus radios.
Yeah. So when we switch to the, when we switch to the digital system, those are through the 911 towers. And again, I'm talking out of my area of expertise. It's my understanding, it's all through the 911 tower. So the need for that tower will, will go away.
They had better coverage.
And we're close to being able to execute on that. The representatives from the state were coming in town here and then they might've already been in town. It's supposed to happen here anytime to do the technical work that needed to happen within the sites to give our radio frequencies access. So what it's a matter of is once that occurs, we have to switch all the buses at once. So every bus has to be touched. And all the radios have to be installed and all that. So what we're going to do is we're going to start by installing the radios in the maintenance vehicles in our county cars and test the system out that way. And then I anticipate that during one of the holiday breaks, whether it's Thanksgiving or Christmas, that we'll bring all the buses to one location and switch the buses at that time. But we don't want to, we don't want to switch the buses right now with kids coming back Tuesday, because if there's a problem, it'll be a mess. But the state couldn't, they, they couldn't get down here until now, so we just need to. But we're getting closer.
Closer.
It's been a, it's, it's been a just, just like the Odyssey.
Like the journey.
Yeah.
So we're going to pull.
Okay, yeah, so I'm going to pull that just for legal review, and then I'll bring it back to you at your next board meeting.
We'll review.
Legal review, ask per.
Yep.
So we'll skip.
Four. Okay.
Move on to number five, consider for approval, the contract between SLG Media and the Wayne County Board of Ed for live streaming at Spring Valley High School, beginning July 1st through June 30th, 2026, at a cost of $10,000.
And that's actually, that's wrong, the way that that's written.
That was my question.
The school will actually receive $10,000.
That's what I was wondering about.
That's what I read in the contract.
When I read that and it said.
It will receive the cost.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, the school will pay for it.
For the right, for the rights to stream.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's just at Spring Valley?
That's what I was wondering too. Is it just Spring Valley?
So Spring Valley is the one that brought this to us and asked for our approval. And the company rightly asked for the board's approval instead of approval from the individual school.
Yeah.
And so Spring Valley brought it to us. And so I had it reviewed internally by folks here as well as our attorney. And I made sure that the principal at the school was on board and everything. So they think it's going to be a positive step forward. And then I did ask them to share with the other two high schools. And so the athletic directors were together for a meeting and that information was shared with them. So I think they're looking at it and considering it. Now, you know, it'd be up to the company whether they wanted to.
To do that.
But, but that information's been shared, so they, they know that this agreement is coming to fruition. But it was Spring Valley High School that came to us about this.
But they are paid, the school's paying for it.
No, no, there's no payment. The school is getting paid $10,000 for the rights to the streaming services.
Company will make money off the ads and stuff.
Right, okay.
And I want to point out, the one thing that I liked.
$10,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the agenda's wrong. It shouldn't have said at a cost of $10,000. It's, the school will receive $10,000. The one thing that I did like in the agreement is that they will, students will assist with the broadcast.
Right.
They reserve a spot for a student in, in every broadcast.
That's excellent.
And then they also reserved a spot for us to do some district advertising as well.
The superintendent's spot.
Yeah.
They also mentioned streaming graduation, which I thought was.
Oh, that'd be great.
Pretty cool.
Yeah.
Do we, don't we need, do we need to approve it tonight since football starts next week or not? Can we just revise, take off the $10,000 or do something?
Well, I think, I think it's, the contract's fine.
Yeah, the contract.
That's what I meant, so.
I, I would request that we make a motion. There's a difference of opinion about the contract being fine. I've been waiting for.
Okay, we're, we're at the questions and concerns, so have at.
What's the concern with the contract?
Stinks.
Can you elaborate on?
Yeah, I can elaborate on that.
You have a highlight, sir.
Yeah. I'll take it paragraph by paragraph. I got the very first paragraph, second line, it's bound between the Spring Valley, a Wayne County School District. Did I get a different copy than everybody else? What is the Spring Valley a Wayne County School District? I don't mean I, I brought, gosh, I've, I've read stuff tons, gazillion times. I've had stuff, but that's like, wait a minute. No, this should be, I'm guessing.
Spring Valley High School.
Well, Spring Valley, or if the Wayne County Board of Education is going to agree to it, I think it would be bound between the Wayne County Board of Education and SLG Media Group LLC. And in the last line of the same paragraph, it didn't give, didn't give the address of the school district, but it did give the address of SLG Media Group, 208 16th Street, Ashland, Wayne County, 41101.
I didn't notice that.
Uh, that's not my recollection of how the geography is. So I've got a problem with that. So I've got a problem with that.
Lost the river, didn't they?
Yeah. Uh, the fact, there's stuff I would normally want to change on the term a, a little bit. I could be more exact, but if they're paying, the Spring Valley's going to get ten grand, I'm not so much worried about that. And I mean, there's some others, if I was paying somebody to do this, I would want something, okay, you got to do this school and this, well, heck, it's ten thousand dollars, and it's like found money. There is a typo in paragraph number two in the fifth line. It's typed, it says held a the school. I guess it should be held at the school. Yeah, probably at the school. Again, if they're getting paid, it's not, some of this stuff I would want more ex- exact, but.
Well, anything you think needs to be addressed, go ahead and.
Well, that, I know we got to at least get the name correct, and the, the fact that it's money going to them, again, that makes me feel much better than obligating us to pay money. On, I didn't number the, it's probably, I think thirty on the handwritten numbers.
Which one?
Uh, I think it's, my copy that I got, they had a thirty. I don't know if everybody got that. On that, it's got notice, and the school district, it got Spring Valley, Wayne County, well, obviously changed that out to the Wayne County Board of Education, our address, attention to the superintendent. Under fourteen indemnification, I guess, I think I get what they were trying to do, kind of have it mutual. I don't know that the Wayne County Boards of Education has an owner. In the second line, it's got the other party, and it's directors, officers, owners. Does the school district have an owner?
No.
Wouldn't think. On page thirty-one and paragraph seventeen, oh, about six lines entered, it talks about to be in violation of a material law. Again, to me, that's kind of word salad. What the heck is a material law as compared to an image? But I'm not too worried about it. Uh, article nineteen on that page. This agreement is made and entered into in Boyd County, Wayne County. This agreement shall be governed by the laws of the Commonwealth of Wayne County. Any action or claim arising from, under a precedent agreement, shall be brought in the court, state or federal, within Boyd Ca- Boyd County, in the Commonwealth of Wayne County. I'm proud to be in Wayne County. I don't think we're a Commonwealth.
Kentucky's a Commonwealth, West Virginia's a state.
So they're just stuff that bothered me when I read this. I'm, I'm in favor of the concept. I'm really in favor of Spring Valley getting ten grand. I just think it needs to have some editing.
Want the contract cleaned up, don't you?
Yeah.
Clean up the language.
Yep. Way to go, Randy.
Get really tore up in court.
Well, I don't think we're going to get into court, but that's just. It looked like one of the fir- first drafts of something I did before I approved it.
Right. Looks like somebody cut and paste a lot of.
Yeah, it was a template, and they were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cutting and pasting to miss some spots.
I didn't want the students.
That's something get cleaned up.
I did too, near term, Randy.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, out of everything that Randy's brought up, I don't see anything that is a deal breaker, so.
Okay.
If you all will authorize me to make the corrections that Rand- Randy has pointed to, and then. Approved just as Randy has addressed it, and then we'll.
Give us a copy or whatever.
Yes.
No, that's fine.
So motion.
So the motion is.
To approve the contract with our superintendent.
Let's, let's do this.
Okay, let's do this.
Authorize me to approve the contract. With the understanding that the items that Randy has brought to the attention are edited in the contract. Because they, they have the contract, so I'll request the changes. If they make all the changes that he has spoken of.
Right.
I'll go ahead and sign it, and it'll be authorized, and I'll provide you all a copy of it. If for any reason, any of those changes aren't accepted, then I won't sign it. So. You're authorizing me to sign it if all the corrections are made as Randy has pointed out.
I'll make a motion to authorize you to do that.
I'll second.
So motion by Johnita and second by Randy. Any other questions or concerns? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Right, potential items for a future agenda.
Well, I mentioned earlier, we're going to have the assessment results will be completely. Or will be released from their embargo tomorrow, so the next meeting will be focused on reviewing all of those assessment results.
Anything else? Anyone else?
That's all I have.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Question about Johnita, second.
Second.
Randy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, seven thirty-four.
I'll beat you again, Randy.
That's okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. Hold on.
Yes.